Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Board of Education meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 15th, 2017. The time right now is 7:01. And if we could, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move right to Agenda Item B, which is public participation on any matter related to Board responsibilities. As a reminder, our phone number is 860-665-8736. We'll wait just a second. Okay, seeing nobody calling in and no members of the public in our audience, we can move to Agenda Item C, which is new business. And we are going to have a discussion and possible adoption and adjustments of our 2017-2018 Board of Education budget to the Town Manager. Okay. What's to start? You want to start? You're gonna go over these? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think what we're gonna do, I think the best thing to do, in our previous session, a lot of Board members asked some questions. So Bill and Pam and Stephen and Wendy and Lou have done a lot of research and kinda have answers to all of our questions. So we have a lot of that in our white folder. So if you pull that out, I'm gonna ask Bill and Lou and the team to kinda walk us through some of the questions that we had.
Sure, we have to, Lou, Lou.
I'm sorry? Oh, Mr. Toffel.
We were submitting, getting a submittal for this tonight?
No, so we have three possible motions on the table. We have the adoption of the budget, we have, we can make some adjustments, and we have the possible transmittal. Believe tonight, we will probably, we're definitely gonna adopt the budget.
I have one question on that without a CIP downstairs.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, wait a minute. We're gonna adopt the budget from Dr. Collins, make it our own so that we can work on it. What we probably won't do tonight, because we don't know about CIP, is we'll wait on the transmittal to the Town Council.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to adopt-
I just wanna make sure that we weren't gonna submit it.
Correct, so, no, so we have to adopt the budget so that we can talk and work on it, and then we'll probably hold off till after the CIP meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Right, 'cause right now it's my budget, and it'll become your budget, and you can do whatever you like with it at that point.
Okay.
So there were some, some questions, a couple of them were combined, but the majority of them, we tried to go in order and do them. So I'm gonna let Lou, the first one is Lou's, so I'm gonna let him start. It's around the 5:15 and the-
Okay. The first request on the list was to provide a flowchart of the 5:15 activities that relates to the non-lapsing account. Now, if everyone can recall, the non-lapsing account has the continuity of surviving any one year of operations, and we can add to it, utilize funds that are in the account. And because of the nature of it being a perpetual account, it can impact multiple years of activity. In the way I laid it out last year in 2015, the only action that happened was the declaration of the surplus, which was done as part of the budget adoption in April. So the $515,000 that was declared at that time became your year-end balance for 2015-16, which rolls forward to your opening balance in 2016-17. At this time, from our forecasting estimates, you know, we have the possibility of needing to draw down about $225,000 of the $515,000 this year to cover some of the overages associated specifically with special education. Yeah, if this came through and was an action that the Board made in the next few months, we would close the year with a balance of $290,000, notwithstanding any additional surplus declaration that was made. Is everybody with me at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Since we're talking prospectively about things that might happen this year, with the $225,000 potentially being used, you know, the opening balance prospectively for next year is going to be the $290,000. That will obviously change if we need to take more than 225 or less than 225. And when you add in the surplus and what might occur with that, the number becomes much wider range of possibilities for the year. Those decisions are all within the Board's purview, as far as how we reconcile our budget and what initiatives and goals that we set for ourselves to move forward for next year. So I can't be any more precise at this time, other than if this format is comfortable for the group, as things occur throughout the rest of the year, it's just easy for me to update it and then update the full Board, you know, at an upcoming Board meeting.
Go ahead, Josh, do you wanna ask a question?
So this certainly shows what's in the account when, I think I had made the request, my request was how, what budget maneuvers we had done to move the 5:15 in and where the, where it was located in our budget throughout the three-year span. So where it came from originally, what we did in December, and what it's reflected in this.
Okay, well, there's only been one action taken so far, and that was the declaration of surplus last April as part of the budget adoption.
To move money, right, but my, my, so my question for the flowchart was-
Remember, we talked about all the different, remember, we talked about the three different places it's been?
Yes.
How it was in health benefit or-
Starting in health benefits, and now the shortfall is in the salary accounts, five big programs.
And somewhere it was in plant operations as well, so-
Remember?
Well, they're two different years.
Right, so that's the flowchart that I wanted, was over the two years and into this third year with this, with next budget, where it's shown up.
Okay, those won't have any relevance from a continuity standpoint, year to year. Last year, when we did the declaration, we felt we could best manage taking the surplus out of the plant operations account. That has nothing to do with this year's activities.
That's okay.
Right, but that, I think that, I think there's a need to show where it-
It's just, it's just too confusing. People can't follow the money.
The journey of, the journey of where it went and where it is, and where we find it in this budget, which is now in the salary account.
Okay.
How, how it's made that path from one to two, three.
Okay, so if, where it's, in the first column, where it's the surplus declaration in April 2016, and I would say taken from plant operations account, would that be a satisfactory annotation for everybody's purposes?
Yeah, and then-
Yeah.
Then where it's, where it's gone since then.
All right, and then in this year, the second question about where it's been really is a budget question, it's not the non-lapsing account.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so I'll have to split this, where I'll have the top half be the non-lapsing account, and the bottom half would be budgetary.
Implication.
Because they won't necessarily coincide with each other.
Right, right, but it'll show where, on, where it's, where the whole has been shown.
It's just confusing from the very beginning, when we said 5:15, and then it was gonna go to cover those teachers, right? And then the fact that, okay, well, we didn't use the money out of that account for the teachers, that's, that was too easy.
Well, they only have one account, they only have one account. Yeah, they, they put that, it's only been in one place on the town, once it's been sitting in there at that account.
That's a question about how we're using the 515. And my question's more about where, where the 515 hole started from and where it was shown in our current budget and where it is in our next year's budget.
So tell me how my question is different.
Yours is whether or not we spent the actual dollars and what we spent, and what, and what's caused it to not just spend all the dollars?
No, it's not. No, well, yes and no. It's confusing. You, we talked about a $515,000 need to take money from our last year's budget for teachers, right?
Right, that we didn't know where we were gonna go.
Correct, yes, exactly, exactly. And from there, when somebody, the next time we asked about it, I don't know, a month or two months later, it was like, well, no, that money, the surplus money is not, it's in health benefits, or we took it out of that. It was confusing from the start. It wasn't, it's not clear to somebody. I still cannot follow the trail of the-
So it's been, it's only been in one place, in the town. So when we declared it, we gave it to the town, essentially, right?
Right.
And they put it in a-
Right, I understand that.
In that account, and sat there, and then when we went to take it out, where did it go? I think that, is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, all right, so-
That is not my question.
That's not your question, okay.
My question is where the 515 hole has been throughout.
Now, make sure Debbie gets these, so, okay. For this year, it started in benefits, and then we modified it at the December meeting, where you moved the shortfall from benefits back to salaries where it should be.
Now you lost me.
Right, and I think that causes the need of the flowchart.
Yeah, okay. All right, clearly we have some more work to do on this one.
Yeah, I know.
Yes. I shall not be deterred, I'll get it right.
I still don't understand how our questions are different, so I apologize.
To give you an example of why the thing, people often get confused about the changes. So does anybody remember at the last meeting a week ago, how many out-placed students we had? Anybody can remember how many were?
Twenty-six?
Well, I mean, total, total.
Fifty-something.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-something.
Yeah, I win.
Anybody, it's 59 today.
Oh, wow.
So, I mean, that's how, remember, I said they've been in the pipeline? So we had 12 kids, so just in one week, we're up. So that, that's, I mean, how quickly things change, so, so, you know, that we needed in the salary, who knew, last year where exactly we were gonna need it, so, yeah, wait.
What I feel like we really need is a dry erase marker. Do we have one? Because I would like, I mean, and I'm not even kidding, but to say, here's, 'cause I, now you lost me with the hole for this year. I don't, I'm not sure.
When we say we took $515,000 out and it's for, it was to use for teachers, but then we didn't use it, or we didn't need to use it that way, and we shifted money around, and I understand.
But we do now.
It's not clear.
Okay, the, let me grab, you know, grasp my head around this. 515 came out of plant operations. It went into the non-lapsing account. So that's where that money is. It's in that account.
Hold on, what year did it come out of plant operations?
April 2016.
2016.
Worth of 2015-16 year. We had to come up with 515.
Right.
So I think what Josh is asking is how has taking that money out of that prior year budget impacted the budgets going forward, because it was taken out, right? Okay.
Right, well, there was the corresponding action that required the Board to cut their budget by $515,000, preserve the 515 of last year's resources, set it aside in the non-lapsing account, and put an additional cut into your budget of $515,000. So the actions crossed fiscal years, where you actually took the cash last year, set it aside in the bank account.
This year.
And then you had to adjust your starting point budget with a reduction of 515. For expediency's sake, we took it out of benefits at the April meeting, so we could move everything forward.
I guess that's where you lost me. Why did we do that?
Because we had no sense of exactly where that cut was going to come from, program by program. We could've just said, okay, we'll take-
To put it in one place.
$103,000 across the five big programs and figure it out at the mid-year transfer. Instead, you know, we just, or we'll take the whole lump sum against benefits for now, and then when we were ready to redo the allocation in December, we moved the money back into the salary account, because for one reason, it distorted the presentation of what our budget need was. You know, we were only showing 1.78 when the real salary increase was 2.52 or 2.53. Okay, as well as it, you know, did the collateral impact on benefits, which showed a much larger increase needed when the actual program was going down for next year. So it leveled, leveled the, the variances and put, recognized the issues and put them in the proper categories, the salary account and the benefits account separately.
Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, but there, there have only really been two transactions, right, unless you count the five.
There's three in total, three. You had the one taking the money from last year's operating budget, declaring surplus.
Yep.
The second-
I understand that.
Right, the second item was, at the same time in April, you implemented and passed the $515,000 budget cut as part of what was adopted.
Okay.
The third transaction was a zero transaction, which was a minus to salaries and a plus to benefits. It had no impact on this year's budget, other than realigning it into different programs. Exactly the same as you would've done with the salary transfer or any other transfer of need that the Board chose to enact during any year. Excuse me.
So did the money come out of plant operations or out of benefits?
The cash came out of plant operations last year. Okay, the budgetary reduction for this year came out of benefits.
Okay, now I get it. Now I get it. I didn't get it before, now I get it.
Okay.
So that's what we need, that's what we need.
Now I get it. You had to do something, and the other year, she just took it out of here, okay.
Arrows and, arrows and numbers and dollar signs.
Places are going, where it's coming from.
I get it.
Okay, it's still getting redone for the next meeting.
Okay.
And Nancy, I will say, so one of the questions that you asked, combine that with, we originally needed 515 for teachers, but we don't need that all for teachers, and why?
That's the two, now, right.
And which is, which is on the chart that Lou did say-
Correct.
Put in, I mean, it's not itemized, we talked about that at last meeting, but, you know, as of, if we knew now, if we knew then what we know now-
With all of the things that changed.
We would've said we needed $225,000 instead of 515.
Yep, that makes perfect sense. I get that, okay, yes.
Okay, I don't wanna complicate matters, but I mean, if we, I don't say if we were smart, but if you wanted to maximize the, that account, you have technically your health benefits credit, so you could technically leave the 515 in there if you wanted and use your health to do it. But then you're gonna have all sorts of, you know, things, you know. So we technically need 225 or so, so we're saying right now, but you can only put 1% in there, so it probably would be wiser to leave the 515 in there and use the health benefits. That may make things more confusing, so, but it would give you the opportunity to put more money into that account if you can't go over 1%.
Right.
It's just like being the kid at school, being told by the teacher to take your homework home and do it again.
Sorry, Lou. Okay, well, that was only request number one, so let's go to number two.
Maybe we'll do better on the next.
Let's see how we did on the next one.
All right, I'll let Steve start this, 'cause I'm losing my voice quicker, I'll pick up later.
So this is the request to discuss the non-certified salary accounts. There were questions in regards to the wage increases that we shared.
Oh, yes.
So if you, you know, the, the initial page just shares a little bit about full-time benefited positions, less-than-full-time hourly staff positions, and special education paraprofessional positions. But I think the, the heart of what the question was is on Page Two and thereafter, which shares a little bit about the budgetary breakdown with the non-certified salary account, which is as follows. There are full-time benefi, benefi, physicians in that non-certified salary account. They make up about 75% of it, which is about $8,126,515. And then there's, God bless you, less, less-than-full-time hourly school staff, which is about 25%, which is $2,729,40, for a total of around $10,855,555. And I think what we wanted to just share are some of the changes that occurred for us to be competitive, try to recruit and retain some of the positions that we're seeing in the hourly wage force that we're losing, and continue to, even with the changes that we're trying to make. We're still not near full comparison, and I'll show you that on the pages to follow. But under special education paraprofessionals, the salary, the hourly scale wage went from a range of $3.25 starting to $18, and we moved that to $14.50 starting to $18.50. So that was the salary range adjustment that we had made. It does not include benefits, there is no union to this position, it's strictly an hourly wage. You work, you get paid, you don't work, you don't get paid, position, okay? So that's there. We have ABA tutors, also to support the special education student population. The hourly scale range went from $18 to $20, and that went to $18 to $22. Again, looking at comparable rates in other districts, this is somewhat aligned in moving us in the right direction, being able to retain the quality staff and recruit the quality staff that we need. Learning tutors, the hourly scale range went from $13.50 to $18 last year to $14.75 to $19.50 this year. So those were the adjustments that we had made within the workforce to, again, try to recruit and retain folks. We still continue to have a high transient population in this workforce. We are not able to retain these folks as well as we'd like, because as you can see on the pages that follow, we are getting closer to comparative wage, salary. However, we are still below in, in some of the neighboring districts. And I think where you'll see that, when you go into the table of charts, if you, before you do that, if you read the summary of what we wrote at the bottom of Page Two, that Newington's pay rates lag neighboring districts by anywhere from 5% to 30%, depending on the position. In addition, key positions such as special education paraprofessionals and academic tutors are eligible for benefits packages in many of the surrounding communities. Newington is at a significant competitive disadvantage when trying to recruit for these positions or retain existing staff. And if you could just please review the charts that follow, you'll see type of data that we tried to just pull since our last Board meeting, so that was most current. So some school systems are still getting back to us, we don't have all the comparison data yet, but this is what we could get between last meeting and today. And where you'll see some of the more significant differences are when it's under the notes, where they do provide benefit packages.
Do you remember last meeting, I was really confused, when we were talking about this, because there was a change that was made, I thought to like long-term subs or building subs.
Yes, permanent building substitutes.
Permanent building subs, that's not here.
Correct. So no, that is no longer in this account.
Right, that was the whole thing.
That has been moved out into the five core areas, because they work in the building, they work with the, you know, each of the programs.
So that was another, okay.
Is that correct, Lou?
Yeah, that was really the financial transaction, was, the question was about where the, this expenditure come from.
Right, I remember that, okay, so that's different than this. Other questions for Steve?
Yes.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
So for West, the following pages, what, two and three, Farmington and West Hartford, do they sort of prime their future teachers by hiring them as tutors if they have a degree? Why, do you think?
Yes, we, we also try to do that as well, yeah, any vacancies that we have that are, if we have folks who are tutors in our district and they are certified and we have vacancies, we definitely try to encourage, we encourage them, not only encourage them to apply, but we give them first opportunity for interviews, and sometimes we'll do that even before we go outside to outside candidates. Sometimes we don't, sometimes we do, depending on the position, but we absolutely try to retain folks in positions that we can.
So why do you think we're not retaining them? Is it the salary only?
Benefits and salary, absolutely. So benefits are extremely important to folks, especially in this day and age where they're harder and harder to get at a, a level that's, you know, able to, folks can able to afford.
And our requirements are much higher, too.
I'm sorry?
Our requirements are much higher.
Right, we do for most positions require a bachelor's.
Okay, so does Farmington, I guess.
Yes, some districts do, and others require something either called, or not something called, but an associate's or test that folks can take called the parapro. So that would be a comparable assessment possibly to an associate's degree, so some districts, you know, their standard stops there, where ours goes all the way to the bachelor's, where some other districts do too.
Okay, do we have information on if the people are, why they're leaving, I guess?
We do exit, exit surveys and exit interviews, and the primary reason is always for the hourly rate and benefits. Yeah, that is always the primary reason. There are sometimes secondary reasons and distance, location, things like that, but the majority of folks share with us it is based on this.
Right, one of the things everybody should just consider is, think of the benefit package as being an additional one-third over and above whatever the hourly rate is. So if you're getting paid $20 an hour, your benefit package will be somewhere in $6 and $7 an hour, you know, routinely at that point. So put a better perspective as far as how wide that gap is compared to where we are right now.
Steven, you have a vacancy assessment, and basically said that, so by the end of the year, we were basically down 30 positions.
Correct.
Okay, so where would that money that we would've used?
Right, so, so a lot of that money has gone toward the funding of the wage increase that we put into place.
Oh, you did say that last time, okay, yes.
Right, so it wasn't, yeah, right. We, we need to be competitive, we need to fill these positions. It's very difficult to the operations in the, of instruction and, and the school day for students when, when we are down in these positions.
So, so though we made these changes, these increases, at the very beginning of the school year?
We did.
Okay. But not knowing that 30 would be unfilled and we'd actually have that money available to do it? You're saying that some of that money?
We made, we made the, we made the salary adjustments over the summertime.
This, this year?
For this upcoming school, for hiring for this upcoming school.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't done last year?
No, no, no. No, the rates last year, that would be on Page Two, some of the scale rate changes that I showed, like-
Yep, those would've been in place.
Right, so, you know, the $13.25 to $18, that was last year, that was the scale range, and then this, for this summer, we kinda changed it to 14.5, starting rate of 14.50. That would be the comparison.
I usually judge it by how many letters I have in my folder.
Yeah.
It seems to have gone down a little bit, but not, not-
Right, so the rate at which folks are, are exiting isn't as high right now as last year, however, our fill rate is still up there, meaning we, we still have not filled all of the, so we're still running short every single day, which then impacts our ability to get substit, so, so when we don't have these folks in place, we have to use substitutes every day. So I'll, I'll just paint a picture, you know, I'm principal at John Patterson School, we have a student who requires a tutor, I don't have a tutor, I have to put a different sub in there every day. If I'm lucky, I can get the same sub a couple days in a row, maybe they'll wanna keep coming back, maybe they don't want that assignment, because it's not the easiest, it's a challenging one, they'd rather be in a classroom, or they'd rather be as a general-led tutor. So I'll go in and fill in for that position that's not filled. So we have lots of positions that are still unfilled, that we're just every day putting subs into, which then depletes our ability to put substitutes into classrooms. And oftentimes, some people would rather work one-on-one with a student all day than be in a classroom where there's a lot more expected of you. So for the same rate, subpay, I can choose that assignment versus a classroom, so now I have no one to fill in the classrooms, and I have to pull even more tutors to fill into the classroom. This becomes a very logistical challenge, however, even beyond that, I'd hate to put that as the primary issue. Primary issue is it takes away from student learning, consistency in student learning, and that is something that we're trying to address through this. That is important to us, and I think everyone at this table.
So what threw me off, I'm sorry, at the vacancy assessment was, 'cause it says at the end of the 2016-2017 school year, so it was the 2015-2016 school year. It said this resulted in approximately 30 unfilled academic hours. Because it said this resulted in approximately thirty unfilled academic hours and then you made the changes at the beginning of this school year.
Yeah, that's right. That is a typo.
Correct, yes.
Okay, sorry, that's what was throwing me off.
Yes.
Okay.
So I should say fifteen, sixteen.
I did that.
Okay, no, 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 that's what threw me off. I thought that like we had already made, that's. Gee, Lou.
I don't know.
Okay, got it. Any other further questions on this topic before we move on? Mr. Schulman?
So it's, it combines this topic with the next one of all our salaries and Lou, I'm just going to hit you with the big one. So how much of the increase is reflected in the 112 accounts in the major areas? Or are they not in the major, in the five major areas for our tutor staff?
Wait, Josh, did you jump ahead? Where are you?
I'm like, I'm in between. So there was a pay scale increase at the beginning of this year.
Right.
Which means somewhere in our budget book, that expected increase carries through to next year and where does that reflect?
Well, it actually is a matter of was money you didn't spend last year. We had significant positive variances in the major programs last year. It was one of the points of contention at the budget hearings. And it's because if you don't have the hourly support staff in place, that money is not spent. So it was a matter of, okay, the choices, we can have a three, four hundred thousand dollar surplus for jobs not being filled and save the money, but you don't have the academic performance because of that. So the salary, the pay rates were increased out of really the surplus that was already there.
Right, but now we're expecting, and we're budgeting for all the positions that we have at a higher rate than we budgeted for last year.
Or are we budgeting for less tutors knowing that we can't fill them all?
No.
We're still budgeting for the full amount.
So where in our budget?
So there'd be an increase like Josh is saying.
From last year's budget to this year's, to this upcoming budget, so where is that?
Well, it's still in the other salaries account at this point. You know, when Mr. Sylvia last week was saying, okay, we transferred out expenses for the permanent building subs from the other salaries account.
To the academic areas.
The academic areas. They put that positive number out there in the budget sheets for everybody to see. He was expecting a two hundred, approximately two hundred to thirty thousand dollar reduction in, that money is coming from somewhere else. What's a plus in one place is a negative somewhere else. The other salaries account has been bolstered to handle the, what we anticipated as additional needs in this area because we're still not as competitive as we need to be. And we only had a, I don't have the number right in front of me. Went from a million two thirty-five to a million one ninety-three, so it was around a forty thousand dollar cut. Right. So if you think of the net of those two numbers is the money that's still being held in the account at this time. To handle the raises.
But none of, none of these descriptions say tutors.
On.
On the other salaries detail breakdown.
It should say adjustments on it.
Daily substitute teacher adjustments.
It says daily substitute teachers adjustments.
Right, that's the pay adjustments that we have to factor in across everybody.
But is that for tutors also?
Yes, it is.
And so last year, in the sixteen seventeen budget that we passed, that included the permanent building subs?
Yes.
Okay, and how much was moved out for permanent building subs?
I want to say it was around two hundred thirty thousand dollars.
I think so. I thought it was two sixty-two. Somebody said that's my.
Yeah, I wasn't in the room when that item came up. I was exiled because of my problem last week. Thanks.
That was the long-term subs?
I don't know. I don't know if it was just long-term subs.
No. Building subs, I'm sorry, not long-term subs. The building subs, yep, okay.
So that's the number that's reflected, so divided by, whatever it is divided by five reflects the increases in the five major categories in the 112 account.
Correct.
And so then we added back in the same amount for increases in pay?
That was around two hundred thousand we put back into that. You know, when we have, I don't have the exact count, but we must have, as I was saying, we have over two hundred thousand hours of work that occurs in all these categories across the year. And if we think we have a general improvement for everybody of a dollar an hour, you know, that's, you know, we don't try to really budget with a lot more refinement on that because it's very hard to tell exactly how we're going to work the scales at that point. We don't know until the end of the year, you know, where our real difficulty areas are going to be.
So then my confusion comes from the fact that that, that line item in other salaries, daily substitute teachers adjustments, is the same from last, from this current operating budget to our proposed budget? And it sounds like we took more out than we're putting back into that specific account.
Into other salaries?
Yeah, in other salaries.
Yes, right. Well, you also had a reduction in the degree changes, you know, because of the contract change that was implemented before by eliminating the lanes and making it more, a bit more challenging to advance across the lanes. You know, we went from about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year down to a hundred, to seventy-five thousand.
Right, but if, if we're just looking at daily substitute teachers and adjustments, we have seven eighteen, one thirty-five in that specific one, and we take out two thirty and put back two hundred, we shouldn't come up with seven eighteen, one thirty-five because that's the same number and we have two different numbers that we're changing it by.
Okay.
So that, that doesn't make any sense.
I'd like to say it was more scientific and done with a lot of empirical, a million line items of spreadsheets, but it wasn't. It was done more on a, you know, a macro type of analysis that we were doing, knowing where the vacancy issues still are, knowing that we had to set aside some money to address the issue that's here. So, you know, I certainly could rework that and have a more refined approach, you know, for next week, if that's what somebody would like.
I, I mean, it, it ju, I mean, if we're taking money out of the account, we put the same amount back in, then we have the same number, but it sounds like we didn't do that, which confuses me as to why we have the same number. So I mean, if we just put back the same amount and that's what we think it's going to cost to cover the, that, that's fine, but if we don't think it's going to cost that, then I would see a need for a reduction.
Why wouldn't it cost the same though? Right, well, the fill rate as it is right now was only marginally improved. And that's really the basis of, you know, how much of an improvement we would want to move forward for anybody. If we look at it and say, you know, we're still two dollars short across everybody, we don't have enough money to handle two dollars across the board for everyone because that would be about four hundred thousand dollars based on our, you know, everybody working. One of the things we're hopeful is with the pay rate and the fill rate going up simultaneously, we will be spending more, disproportionately more because that money is now not what you would call breakage in other situations where you have a vacancy that was created and you left it unfilled and you created breakage. And this is not the kind of breakage we want to actually have.
It's actually a real problem. Every month, teacher council, it comes up every month. It came up this month.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
No, I mean, that makes perfect sense. Our discussion last week was, we took, and Jane, the number was, I have her written down here, two sixty-two was taken out of the account for permanent building subs and about two twenty was put back in for wages. But if, if we're saying that all that money comes out of the same daily substitute teachers and adjustments, then it should be down forty-two thousand dollars instead of level.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's how it works out. So, I mean, if, if we put more back in.
We'll put a more empirical assessment in, you know, with a numbers are what we think it really will be. You know, I have all the statistics on, I'm looking at hours people are working. We can extrapolate something, you know, reasonably quick that'll.
It's still a guess though, I mean, let's be honest.
Certainly a guess, but I mean, it still needs to work out.
More educated guess, that would be more comfortable to look at and assess, so understood.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Lou before we move on? Okay, next topic, impact of governor's budget changes.
I'm not sure I want to even say anything about it because it changes every day, it seems. So what I did is I tried to keep you in the loop by putting the most current in your folder tonight and as well as in the team drive, the team Google Drive, so that you have those. It seems to keep changing. Today, we're up by two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Tomorrow, we could be down by three million. I mean, it just seems to fluctuate quite a bit. So we put some of the estimates there. The Connecticut Mirror had one estimate, Katie Roy had another one. I think I put hers in there for you. Connecticut School Finance Project has been doing, I think, a very nice job, kind of keeping track of all this stuff. These are significant changes that will have a major impact across the entire state. West Hartford really got, I mean, I just can't even believe how badly they got clobbered to the tune of fourteen million dollars.
So right now, we look okay, but.
But.
But the proposed funding of the teacher retirement.
Exactly.
If you want to, can you quickly explain that to everybody?
So right now, the, and it actually goes through the cap, so, so there is a pass-through. So, so when it comes out of the teacher's paycheck and then it gets passed through to the state, and that's how it gets funded. The state funds the rest, teachers fund six, six percent. And then they have to put another percent and a quarter in all certified employees. What he is proposing is shifting some of that responsibility from the state to the local municipalities. And if you really look at that, that next page where everybody's in the red by millions of dollars, I don't know how, how anybody could, could possibly sustain that kind of change.
Is that the TRS contribution?
Right.
Okay.
So you're talking three, we'd be short three hundred, we're actually up, but if then when we deduct that, we're down by three hundred and something.
No, three million, I'm sorry.
It's three million, yeah, it's about, it's about three point three million dollars, I think of it. That's the latest estimate, if that kicks in. It's hard to tell what will and what won't. These are, these are massive changes. I'm not sure what, what they're going to be able to do. I just can't understand. New Britain is scheduled to get twenty million dollars more. I mean, it's, that fluctuation is just, it's just crazy. Part of it will get implemented, I'm not sure which, so it's a little hard to speculate at this point, but this is the latest information I have.
Questions, Mrs. Braverman, Dr. Braverman?
So, Dr. Collins, this starts, the governor sent this out, yes, in whatever, Barnes or whatever.
Yeah.
Is it real or is?
This is what he's proposing.
Right. And then as, for towns like New Britain, they get a windfall, it sounds like us.
Twenty million dollars.
Right, well, that's based, I think, on President Trump and poor cities performing.
Oh, I don't know that has, I don't think it has anything to do with President Trump. It, no, it has everything to do with probably CJF, the CJF ruling, which has been in the works for ten years now. And it's no secret, Connecticut has not funded its schools the way they need to be funded. You know, it's a state problem. It's not a local problem. The state is supposed to be funding the schools. They're responsible, you're, you're, as a board, you are, your first responsibility is to the state, not the town, right? Yet, they don't give you the money to do what you need to do and therefore you're somewhat reliant, or almost all reliant on the town, which is really backwards. I mean, Connecticut is one of the, one of the worst funded by the state, states in, out of all fifty.
Where did Craig land on this?
Last I heard, there was, there was no change to them. And then I heard today that they were getting cut, but I think they're only getting cut like a hundred thousand dollars or something like that, which they will pass on to us.
Thank you. Emily?
So with the increase that Newington at this moment is scheduled to get, that's still, that goes to the town?
Yes.
And not to us? So if there happens to be, if there's changes and there happens to be a cut to Newington, that doesn't change our budget proposal? Obviously, it changes the town funding.
I think, I think what you're trying to ask, so whenever there's been an increase in ECS funding, which there have been over the years, it's never impacted your budget. You've never gotten that. So I don't know that it will work the same way in reverse. It's hard to tell.
Oh, yeah, I guess that's what I was asking. Because, I mean, in effect, the state is supposed to be funding it so the town gets reimbursed for funding.
Yes, so they get about fifteen million dollars.
For funding education, which makes sense, but yeah, I guess in reverse, I guess that's what I'm wondering is if, how, how that impacts.
You really don't have any control over it. One of the things I gave to Ms. Petronio was the list of grants, so in other words, transportation grant, Delta grant, all of those things, ECS. All that funding goes to the town. The only funding that we retain, and I'm not even sure we retain, I think the town gets it and Lou has to ask for it, is the excess cost, which we budget a net number. And that's what has me a little bit concerned because we, your cost was three point two million dollars, I think, for outplacements, even more now. We budget a net number, so we were estimating about six hundred thousand dollars because you never really know how much it's going to be until the end of the year. It depends on how many kids throughout the year and what services they need and so on. We were scheduled, according to the state, to get eight hundred and eleven. We were budgeting for six hundred. They're estimating eight eleven. So if all things were, went along the same way, we would actually end up with another two hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year that we could spend on special ed related things that we didn't have budgeted, but it's an extra money, so you can actually buy two wheelchair buses if you wanted to. That's, that's how that works. With this new special ed grant, they're, they're proposing elimination of the excess cost grant by replacing it with a special ed grant. So if my memory serves correctly, ECS would go down by about two million and this new special ed grant would go up, I think by, well, it doesn't exist now, I think it's two, three point two, something like that. So the question is, where does that special ed grant go? I don't know. I don't think anybody does.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Number five, the Anna Reynolds report.
Okay, there, Lou and I are going to kind of tag-team this one. There were, there was a, a concern about, or a question about air quality. And we had explained to everybody that we use the, from the EPA, it was called Tools for Schools. And it's a program that we have done since two thousand eight. And it, we do it every year, whether, we don't, we're not required to until your, if your building has been renovated after two thousand three, you're required to do it. We weren't, but we do it anyway. What happened was even though we submitted it correctly, the state defaulted to no because the building hadn't been renovated, so it wasn't accurate. And I'm going to let Lou confirm that or not.
Data entry, yeah, the process is, the survey was done in the summer of two thousand thirteen. And I'm not exactly sure of the publishing date, but it was probably six to twelve months later because the data for all the schools is then put together in a major statewide report, which takes them time to analyze and determine what they're actually going to publish as their own content. So with the questions that were here, it was a very misleading question when it said if you, if your building had, was renovated, rebuilt after two thousand three, skip these questions. So we skipped it in the data entry and all of a sudden they're showing up as no answers on the actual survey form. And since so much time had gone by, there was never an inquiry or question about it. So it wasn't picked up on at the time. And going back and reviewing the information, the two schools that were renovated after two thousand three, which were Elizabeth Green and Ruth Chafee, were represented correctly in the survey. The other five schools were not, Anna Reynolds being one of those five. So it's. So, it's just a matter of recognizing that this is a correction. I also had gone out on the state website, which we have the link on our indoor air quality page on the Board of Ed website. It was an organization called CSIERT, which, if you just scroll down on our page, you'll see it. That would take you to the map of the whole state for the indoor air quality program. It would show Newington as being a full participant, all schools going through the refresher training. So, in air oversight at the state level, inconsistency of the data entry application is all this is, there's absolutely no problem with our program. And anyone who, you know, would click through the link to get to the map that's there, it would be very obvious that Newington is just fine on this, so.
I was surprised when I looked at it, I said, "That's not right."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Surprised to see it too, so.
So I think you just addressed number five and number seven, but correct me if I'm wrong on our list here, the Anna Reynolds report and that the board...
And the ED050, that is the report that is there.
That's the report that we're talking about.
Okay. Any further questions on this topic? All right, seeing none, we're going to go to number six, which is a follow-up on the claim of our microphones broadcasting through police scanners during our executive session.
Yeah, that is currently under investigation right now, and it, we're going to be meeting tomorrow, and we should have, should have some answers for you shortly.
Okay, we're going to go turn the page to number eight. A question was raised regarding if we are using generic EpiPens or not, that was a good question. And it says that Mercy Heatherington, our nurse administrator, will be purchasing the generic EpiPens as soon as they are available? Any further questions there? The brand name?
Are they available yet?
According to Mrs. Heatherington, they were not yet available for her purchase. She also does have hope that there is a free EpiPen program that schools can access a number of EpiPens, and she's hoping, probably rather blindly, that it'll be still available because it is a cost to the state.
Do you have any idea when the generics will be available?
She did not indicate, no. Usually, we don't get them until the following school year because they expire, so they wait.
Any further questions about number eight? Okay. Number nine, a board member questioned the difference between a float nurse's salary and a permanent nurse's salary. Do you want to go ahead and take that?
Actually, Stephen, do you want to do that? You worked on this one.
Thank you. So, the permanent float nurse is paid 250 per day for 188 work, day work here. That totals around 47,000 as the overall annual salary. There are no benefits associated with that position, so it would be around the same price, 47,000, but it would be plus benefits, which is about a $20,000 package. So, the pay rate for a full-time benefited school nurse is, you know, in the contract, the rate is from 45,000 to 54,000, but again, that would include the benefit package.
That's cost of the premium.
Correct.
Questions here? Okay, thank you. Number 10, it said, a question was raised regarding the average number of students that are homebound. Is that Mrs. Maraca or no?
Again, this is a moving target about homebound because it can be based on a medical matter, and so once a student's medical condition improves, he or she could return to school. So as of today, there are nine students on homebound. Two are receiving services as required by law because they have been expelled from the school district. Two are placed by special education because they are pending an out-of-district placement, so we have to have instruction while they're waiting for entry. And then five are medically, and those are the five that are probably the most fluctuating. Someone gets a concussion, depending on the severity of it, could end up with homebound. Another student could, I think we have a back injury or back surgery for a student, and so again, they need tutoring at home, and that is homebound.
Questions about homebound? Okay, thank you. Number 11, a request was made to research the $1,000 rental charge in the Central Direction Program 400 series of the budget, and I believe this was an error, but go ahead, Lou.
Okay. It was an item that, as we looked at it, we ended up withdrawing from the budget. It is part of the replacement pages that you received this evening. We had, I believe, four different items that impacted. There was the NISAC accreditation allowance, there was the $1,000 for the rental account for Central Direction. There was the question about transportation, as far as the, where was the $200,000 cut? That was not a dollar change in the current year budget, but there was a error in coding that was made, and there ended up being double entry, double entries made for, actually, the fuel for the buses. And we just withdrew and corrected the amount of the preliminary request, so it now shows a $70,000 reduction rather than a $203,000 reduction.
So Lou, was it an error in '16, '17, or '15, '16? '16, '17, it was an error, or '17, '18?
Yeah, '17, '18.
'17.
Yeah, in the budget. It was done. In the, I think, there was transportation, there was the insurance account, the correction of the property insurance between general liability and the property insurance account was made. That doesn't affect anything, it was the historical claims from last year. And there was, yeah, the money for NISAC affected both the Central Direction and the Building Direction account. So I think I covered, actually, you have five programs, Central Direction, Building Direction, Board of Ed, Transportation and Insurance with those four items.
Okay.
Lou, if I, as long as we're here, the 70,000, and I think it was less than that, if I remember talking to Alan, this is something that Mr. Klett has been wanting to do for quite some time. It's a, it's a one-time installation fee, that's why it's that large. But this would put GPS on our school buses, so that, and God forbid, a driver became incapacitated, we needed to know where the driver, where the bus was, we could home in on it very quickly, we could track it very quickly, and it also has a nice app for parents if they want to know when the bus is coming. Not that that's why we would do it, it'd be more for a safety thing. So if we had any health benefits money for a one-time purchase, it might be something you may want to consider.
Once that's installed, when we get new buses, would we be able to, would it need a new system, or would we take it from an old bus and put it in a new bus?
Right. Right. Once it goes in, you order them with the hard wire, I guess, in it, and then you just take the thing and you put it in the new one. So if you take one out, put it, yep.
Okay.
Very similar to what they do with the police cars.
Okay, so that was number 14? Is that what you just talked about?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of highlight, because we were taking it out, obviously.
Right.
But if there was money...
That you're saying that would be something you, okay. Okay. Going back up to number 12, why the change in non-certified staff? And I think you, I think we did address this last week, or we thought that this is what it was? So do you want, it was the two administrators, and we replaced it with the, yep, okay. So that, I think everybody, everybody understand that? Right, okay. All right, number 13, board question regarding Building Direction 810 account, and I think this was one that was coded incorrectly, but you want to talk about that?
Sorry. Yeah, just accentuate the coughing, so. In the developmental phase of the budget, that, you know, we have an error here of double budgeting something or budgeting something that wasn't necessary anymore. We had, also had some missing items in the overall budget. One of them was the need to increase the legal fees in the Board of Ed account for upcoming negotiations.
For the summer, right.
As well as, there was the service contract program for the wellness center at the high school was missed as well, so we need to add it, add that back. So the net result of all of these programs is zero change to the overall budget, you're still at the 2.49 number. So, we did not implement a cut at this point, so we just wanted to declare that and make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. Okay, number 15, a request was made for a breakout of special education students outplaced in magnet schools. Who wants to take that?
So, this was a question that came up last week, and Dr. Collins referred to it earlier, because again, this is a... My bottom's on, though, and you can hear me.
I can hear you.
I think it works, I just think my light has not decided to light. So, as of today, there are 59 students who receive special education services outside of Newington Public Schools. And that includes 31 students who receive services in what would be considered an outplacement. That could be that they go to a facility during the day, or it could be that they're placed in a residential facility. So those are the combinations, so the range of cost is significant if it's just a day treatment program or a different school, or if it's a residential facility. In our magnet schools, there are 20 students who receive special education services. They receive those services through the magnet school that they attend, and in turn, we get charged. So although we might have a speech pathologist in Newington that we have as a contracted employee, we get a bill, an invoice, from the magnet school, from Cracker or Learn, for those services provided by their staff. So again, there's a difference in cost. Then there are three students who have special needs and they are homeschooled. Our obligation for a non-entered student who is homeschooled is that we must monitor their program, so there is an annual review that requires staff to be present and review the program of those students. And then there are five students at Emmanuel Christian, so again, that involves assessments and some guidance on the types of services that the students should be receiving in the classrooms at Emmanuel Christian. We don't literally send people there, but we do have to provide those services.
Questions from Mrs. Maraca?
If I can just kind of pipe in here, we have, we met today, there are actually five more students who are, have significant needs, and we're trying, we always try to find a program if we can creatively, we put the transition program in, we put the autism program in, so we like to keep our kids here if we possibly can, but ultimately, the decision always has to come down on what's best for the child. So they need what they need, and that, this is not something that you can, it would be morally wrong to say no to, you know? So they need what they need, and you have to give it to them. If an outplacement ultimately is what's going to be best for them, you have to do it, you really do, it's not, not an option. So, we try to do, keep them home if we can, if not, they have to be outplaced.
So we have five more this year?
No, there are five additional ones now, additional, who we're looking at as...
Oh, to budget for, for next year?
No.
That's what I'm saying, so for this year?
For, right now, right. There are five students that we're trying to come up with a creative solution to see if we can...
Right, so where would that money come from?
I don't know.
That might be our, some of our health benefits money?
This is, it's so volatile, and I've never actually seen it this volatile, but...
Are we at a point where we need to look at adding more specialized programs within the district?
Right, and that's what we've been doing, for instance, with the transition program, the autism program, and so we will put that, we actually have the, what's the other one that, E-Green? The special, and then we have the, remember, we put the ABA, right? So we have done those, and believe it or not, you know, I know it sounds expensive, but I think the number was 158 or one, high 150s out of 161 towns in our special ed spending. I was so much surprised by that. So, we are being very efficient, and ultimately, it does come down with the individual need of the child, and if they need those services, we have to provide them.
Other questions in that regard? Okay, number 16, we'll talk about insurance. I think, Lou, there was, we already discussed that, right, the correction? Okay. The last one was, the board was requesting that all charts and questions answered with regard to the budget be posted online, so I'm assuming the things that we just talked about?
Yeah, and I also, you can ask for this, but this was in my PowerPoint, but I figured, we've been putting this in, so I put this in as well. So that would be your other salaries detail, the employee benefits detail, the insurance detail, and staffing detail. All of that, it's all in, I believe it's in the presentation, which I narrated with my graspy voice, attempted to anyway. And so this will also go online and on the list, right on our website, under Budget. We've put a link right on our front page, it just says Budget, the information is right on the left side, first one. You go there and it takes you right to the past four or five years, whatever it is.
I know this wasn't part of the plan, but since we're just discussing the budget and talking about the different areas, do we want to walk through the budget at a glance, just so everybody has a good understanding of it? I think it might be helpful.
Okay, all right.
So there's the budget at a glance, the color copy that you have, why don't we take a quick look at that?
So for those at home, you have three options, and I would say it depends on how much you want to read. We have a one-pager, we have about an 18-pager, and we have about a 90-something pager. And then we have the entire PowerPoint available as well. Most people choose the at-a-glance. I gave one to everybody else, if they...
You don't have one?
So, do you have another one?
No, it's okay, we'll share.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Go ahead, take that, we're good, all right.
So what this does, it really gives you a one-page snapshot of the budget. Where we were last year, this year, '16, '17, there's our budget amount on the top line, and the increase over the year before was 0.49. The staff requests, this is where every staff member has the opportunity to put into the budget what it is they need for his or her classroom or department. It was actually higher last year, I was expecting this number to be somewhere around 15. So, it's only 10.71, which is lower than it was, I think, the year before. So what we need to run in the district, according to all of the wants in the district, would be a 10.71% increase. We obviously were not going to put that forward. I went, actually, the other extreme this year, and went as low as I possibly could, and that brings you down to 2.49. That's absolutely bare bones, not even the programs that we have moving forward. And I apologize, it's blurry, but the next down, usually there's more green than red, so I just kind of switched it. We'll start with the positive, what's moving forward. It does include funding for all of your contractual obligations, that includes the 14 positions and everything else, so everybody's covered. It does include the one deferred STEM teacher at Newington High School, which we had, but we just didn't find, we deferred it. It does not include the other one. It does include special ed outplacements as of today. It includes, unfortunately, this is the first time we've actually had to, we've been able to fund all of the Priority One maintenance in the past. This year, we were only able to fund half of the Priority One maintenance items. It does include a new marketing course, and it does include a French course, which I forgot to put on here. They were grant-funded or no cost at all, and there were 21 reductions to other programs, or reductions to 21 other programs. What it doesn't include is funding for the middle school accreditation or elementary, we're removing that. We've had conversations with the commission and explained why, and it's time so that we... we remove the funding for that, and we will, our high school will still be accredited, but our elementary and middle schools will not. It won't have any impact on the district financially, you know, it will save a little bit of money every 10 years. Moving across, funding for elementary accreditation, social studies textbooks, it does include some social studies textbooks, but there were, I think, twice the amount. So I believe she's just ordering half of them? Okay. The STEM Academy teacher, the other one, is not in there. The preschool program, we've been putting this forward each year to try to increase our typically developing peers in our preschool. And as I think I've shared with you, five, six years from now, this conversation is going to be a very different one, because there are preschool options available, and people are taking advantage of them, and that is going to be very costly. The bus replacement program, I wish I had my horn so everybody could remember. We're obviously having funded this in a long time. I realize it's a, it's a large number. However, that gets away from you very quickly, and you start to get further and further behind, and you reach the point of no return, as we saw in Plainfield and another community in the same boat. Middle school social workers, this is talked about every single year. It came up at the parent listening tours, comes up from our teachers all the time, and it is a significant need that we have, especially at our middle schools. There were other courses, new courses that were proposed, we're not moving those forward. The Chromebooks, grade three, right now, they are included in the CIP. So they're not in your budget. You have approximately, a little over a million dollars of your operating budget that is currently held in the capital budget of the town. The ed tech coach, this was something that was actually approved but not moved forward, instructional coach, ed tech coach for Newington High School. They still don't have any support at the high school that they do at the other six schools. Elementary class size issues, we had at the lower grades, which we really don't like to have, some very high numbers. I hope the forecasts are telling us that the numbers at Anna Reynolds will go down slightly. We have a very large fourth grade class that will move up to fifth grade, and for whatever reason, it seems that it's not creating a problem in fifth grade. We'll see, but they've typically, at least for the last few years, they've been off about 20 students. People move into town for kindergarten, so you'll get those last minute folks, but we're scheduled to go down by one child hardly. We are.
We still will be a little high next year at Chaffey and Reynolds, second grade and third, I think.
Right, we're not addressing, that's what I'm saying, we're not addressing any class size issues. So you're still going to have those. The...
Question? With the surrounding towns, some of the schools are, they're closing some of the schools? In the future, what's our future look like?
You're, you're, you're flat. You're, you're going to have the same...
Right now, for the next couple of years.
Well, next, in 10 years from now, Anna Reynolds is scheduled to have one more child than it does today. Patterson is scheduled to go down a little bit.
We're not seeing the significant decreases that some of the other towns are having.
Would we look at redistricting, something on that idea?
We need to.
If, if Anna Reynolds stayed at 481, whereas right now, I'm uncomfortable with that number because it's, you know, you're right at capacity. We had talked about it. That is something that is very, very emotional for parents, and we try to avoid that at all possible costs. So I'm going to wait and see what happens. We actually talked about possibly doing it this year if those numbers stayed up there. But they're scheduled to go down. If they do, we should be okay. If they don't, we're going to have to talk about redistricting the most common area that we can. You know, we're not going to start pulling neighborhoods apart and moving those to more logical places. There's a little bit of room at Patterson. I don't want to get parents alarmed for nothing.
Yeah, no, don't open up Pandora's box.
Yeah, because we really try to not to do that if we, you know, especially at the elementary level, it's very painful for them. The digital labs, those have been on the list every year as well. We haven't been able to do those. Instructional supplies, I don't want to give the wrong impression here, we still have supplies. There just aren't going to be as many of them, especially the, I don't say the nice-to-haves, but some of the other types of things we won't be able to get. And then obviously, no, no Priority Two or Three maintenance. And as I said, you have $1.1 million currently tied up in the CIP budget, which I, I don't believe is sustainable. But that's where it is. We're not moving grade seven Spanish on the core. That was, that did come up last night at the listening tour. Parents are still very interested in this, and really kind of saw it as a pair, seventh and eighth grade, and explained that it was, you know, it was movement in the right area, but really financially couldn't, couldn't swing it. And programming lost in previous years, there's a perception that we kind of make it, make things happen, and we, the reality is, we don't have a choice. You have a budget and you have to, you have to make it happen, it's not an option. But we have lost several things over the years that haven't come back. The gifted program is one, we go all the way back to the high school gifted program, you know? So over the years, we've really chipped away at things, so yes, we make things happen because we have to work within our means, but we have, we have lost a lot of, a lot of things over the course of the years. Let's see where we are here. We have, I did, and, oh, that's it. The capital, now this is where people also get confused, because they will say, well, wait a minute, you can't, like, you're not funding teachers, but why are you moving these building projects forward? And that's always very a source of consternation for parents and people who see that. And it's really two completely different funding sources. It's not something you can use to fund people with. You have to use your operating budget, where the capital comes out of, out of the capital account. We have two board members who sit on the, on the CIP committee, who can probably explain it better than I.
Josh and I actually have our CIP meeting on Tuesday. It got moved around a couple of times. So there are, you know, like you said, some items, like our buses, that we have moved over to that budget. And there are proposed cuts, so Josh and I have to go on Tuesday to see what we can do and advocate for, advocate for. And that's why I'm suggesting that we don't transmit the budget until we have that meeting. Josh had that suggestion, and it's a good suggestion, because, and, you know, Bobby brought it up today too, because we really have to see how that's going to play out.
And then you have to really, then you have to make a decision. If it's not funded there, do you defer it? And then we run into the same problem we, we just kind of dug ourselves out of? Or do you fund it by...
Adding it back into the operating budget. Emily?
How many things are in that budget right now that were taken out of our operating budget in order to make the budget more palatable?
Your buses, maintenance, and Chromebooks.
Yeah.
Are really the three big ticket items. Buses, Chromebooks, and maintenance.
And so this is your three that it's been in, that those things have been in CIP? So three, three or four, I guess, four budgets ago, our budget would have had that additional money for maintenance. For some technology, it wouldn't have been Chromebooks then.
Right.
And we probably had some money as a placeholder, but not the same amount for buses, which wouldn't have gotten funded anyway through our operating budget. So if they aren't approved in CIP, that creates a hole that we've been talking about for, we've been talking about for about three years now, that if it's not continuously funded, we don't, we can't just lose that money because it's part of our operation that we've, we've had for years.
Now you're up to a million dollars.
So basically, you're saying $1,123,000 of things that used to be in our operating budget? Well, no, not everything.
Well, the board never really funded the buses. The plan calls for this amount of money. And so if you want to stay on track, so we don't get into a situation where we have to buy 11 buses in one year, you, you, you fund these and then we just swap them out, and, you know, take the old ones out, put the new ones in, and everything runs smoothly. When you start to defer them, obviously, they get older and it gets away from you very quickly.
Okay, thank you. What else? Then I know you just have the increases over the years?
Yeah, people, you know, that's somewhat right, interest to people, so what have the increases been in the past? And so those are listed there. We usually go back, and then we do it by decade over there on the right as an average. So we go back as far as 97, 98, and it was 3.08. And I'm trying to find the year, because I believe it was, Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 2001, we had to buy those nine buses. So you had a 7% increase that year, and then a 7.5% increase the following year, because we got, we deferred our buses, and we had to buy a lot of them at that time as well. But you had a 7 and a 7.5% increase to do that with. But since 2009, you really have been 3% or under. One of them was 4.34. That's somewhat misleading, because you, in order to get that 4.34, you gave up $700,000 to get that. So it's, it's really about, you know, 3.34.
Josh?
I'm just going to say, in the, I've been through five budgets now, and just looking at these numbers, it's the four, four of the five are the four lowest budget increases we've had for 20 years. And Nancy goes back a couple of years further than me and has the other lowest budget numbers that we've had in increases. And the only, only kind of good year, when we got to hire instructional coaches, we gave back $700,000, so.
And then finally, over on the right, the major factors impacting the budget request. This is kind of a nice breakout of, you know, the contractual salary increases, employee benefits, the outplacement costs, insurance. Board of Education, that's where we keep, go ahead.
Right, so in, in that, the 7850 is where you kind of get the magnet school tuition, you get, that goes in your budget. You get to pay for the SRO, that goes in your budget. So there are contractual increases for the SRO that need to be included in there, and we did not include any increase for magnet school tuition. I'm not sure, the whole 7850 wasn't for the SRO. It's usually, usually around six. I don't remember. I know the whole 7850 wasn't, wasn't for that.
Wasn't for one thing?
No, it was a couple of things.
Okay, yeah, I remember, it was three different things.
There were, there were actually more, but, but the net amount of the increase was 7850.
Okay.
So there are other stuff that we cut out. And I tried to keep it about people, because we talked about the right that. It wa, so it will come down?
I thought we already took that out, though.
Yeah, we took that out. Oh, so, but the dollar amount, the budget's still 2.49, you know? Yeah, okay. Okay, okay. But the increase will be 1,75072. Okay, so it just won't say Board of Ed. So that means, but we still have the increase for the SRO, so that means we cut other things. Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
But that won't be a factor.
Gotcha.
This account won't be a factor. These are the only accounts that had, had larger amounts. I kept benefits in there separately, because it always has been, it's the first time I've ever seen it go down. So those are kind of the major factors in the snapshot. And then I also included the amount of your budget, your operating budget that is in CIP, that would actually add, if you put everything in, another 1.69 to your budget, bringing you to 4.18 if, if you were to put it all back in.
So that kind of brings us to the part of the meeting where I think we could, we could, actually, if people still have questions, we could obviously ask more questions, but we could also move to adopt the budget from the superintendent, so we could, we could do that. And then we could make any adjustments today. We could make a couple of adjustments. I know there might be a motion on the table to maybe add something back into the budget or take it out, so we can do that this evening. And then, based on our discussion earlier about the CIP meeting being on Tuesday, I would suggest we have one more meeting after this, and after that meeting, where we can then have another week to digest that and make more adjustments if necessary, before we actually transmit over to the town council. What is, what are everybody, what are everybody's thoughts about that?
I think that's a great idea. I don't think we should make any change. I think we should adopt it tonight as our own budget. I don't think we should make any changes yet, until we get an idea of what's going on at that other meeting.
We, right, so changes based on what happens at that meeting, I agree, they need to be made after the fact. I don't know if it would matter tonight. I know Josh has a motion that he wanted to make.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can, we can make adjustments now and, and however many other meetings we have, as long after we adopt it, so.
Yep, doesn't matter, okay.
I'm just looking at the big picture. That's, that's why I didn't want to make any adjustments now, but...
Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt the superintendent's budget? Emily?
Move the Newington Board of Education to adopt the superintendent of schools' proposed budget for the 2017, 2018 of the $71,936,000.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Braverman. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so now, we have it as part of the Board of Education, and now we can make the decision to either hold off and do any adjustments next week, or we can make an adjustment now, that's up to you.
So I, I would like to make a motion to add in salary for the additional STEM teacher for the high school, if Lou would be so kind to tell me the dollar amount and account number.
The dollar amount to be used is a top scale for masters, which is $90,605.
And what account would that be in?
The STEM account, program 1029, certified salaries.
And do we know what impact that will have on the budget? Can you get your calculator? Okay.
I was thinking about bringing the big one down. I think I can get by with this tonight.
I didn't make it yet. I think Bob just called dibs on the second. I don't know if that's legal.
If this motion passes, it'll move the budget up 2.62% increase. The total dollar of the budget would be 72026605. No, it would be part of the number we get from the agent of record.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lou, can you say that again? So our budget right now is a 2.49% increase, it would take it to a 2.?
62.
Thank you.
And the dollar amount?
72026605.
Oh, 605, I missed that, okay.
Yeah, handwriting, I know.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Schellman?
So I move the 2017, 2018 Board of Education budget be adjusted by... So I move the 2017, 2018 Board of Education budget be adjusted by addition of $90,605 in Account 1029 Certified Salaries for a STEM teacher.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Tufa.
I'll second that motion.
At the high school, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Discussion, Mr. Schellman?
So I, as I said, one of the first times we looked at the budget, I think based on the investment that we've made into STEM, the promises we've made to our students and their families about being able to continue in those programs, it just makes sense to have both teachers. I understand Dr. Collins not wanting to put it in our, in his request because he doesn't want to add things in that we didn't already have. And I appreciate that, but I think that this is something we should have. I think our families expect it. I think the students that didn't get into the academy, either because they're, all the spots were filled already or because they didn't have an interest then, should have the opportunity to take the kinds of classes that we'll be able to offer once the academy at the high school are fully up and running. You know, I, I think, I think it's a huge priority for the Board for a number of years, and, and we should put the dollars behind it, at least in our budget. You know, we may come to have to potentially take it out after the town council gives us their number, but it should at least be something that the town gets a chance to talk about, which is why I'm in favor of adding it back in.
Emily?
I'm going to agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that although I agree, I get where you're coming from, Dr. Collins. You don't want to put anything in there that's more than what we have. But we have made promises to families and worked really hard to put ourselves in a position to be able to offer these things. And now we have the facility, we have all of the steps that have been taken at the middle school. I think it's, although it may save us a few dollars next year, I think it will be more costly down the road not to implement it at this time because, you know, I don't want to be in a situation where we're losing students to magnet schools where they have these opportunities that we had promised them that we would have, that they've gotten excited about, that they've been expecting. If we don't offer it, they will be looking other places, and then we have no control at all over those costs. So I would rather let the town council, put it in the budget, and let the town council know how important we feel it is so that they can make their decision based on that.
I, I think, yes, we definitely need someone to teach our STEM courses, but I, you didn't put it in the budget, and the issue came up two meetings ago in which you did address this. So maybe I, I didn't hear it correctly, but I thought you said that we're still going to have the courses offers, and you're going to do some shuffling at the high school, and they're still going to be offered, and students are still taking those courses.
We have one teacher that we deferred. So one was, we needed two, one for aerospace and one for, they're not calling it biomedical, medical sciences, at the high school. We had one, we didn't defer. So we, we, we had one, but we didn't have the other one. So we would be able to offer some.
Not all.
But it'd be awfully hard to get it, I suppose, I don't know if you'd be able to find someone to teach aerospace and.
Right, I see what you're saying now. So we only have, which one did we get?
Which, no.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't look for anybody yet. I gotcha, okay. I, I see what you're saying, okay. I understand, okay, thank you.
Mr. Tufa?
Yes, originally, the board itself said, build it and they will come. Now it's our responsibility as a board to staff it. And I think, go along with Josh, it's an appointment that we need to fill.
I have, if anybody wants to see the culinary open today, it's magnificent. And so I, I only made two of them because they're in color, but I pass them around. And it shows you the progress up to today with the other areas as well.
Any further discussion on this motion?
Good move. If you wouldn't have brought it up, I would have. I wholeheartedly support the STEM teacher at the high school.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, okay. So a motion's been made and seconded. We've had our discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And then again, the last recommended motion we have was to possibly transmit, but I, I want to just ensure that we're all in agreement on waiting one more week. Is everybody good with that? Jane? Yep, okay, yes, okay. Okay, um, any further questions while we're on, we're on the topic? Any other further budget questions for the team that's here tonight? Mr. Schellman?
One thing I, I personally struggled with when thinking about adding back in the STEM teacher, aside from the fact that I think it's a slam dunk to do it, is that I still feel so strongly about adding our seventh grade Spanish teachers in. I'm just curious, I don't know that I have the stomach to add them in in the climate that we're in right now, but does anyone else have the inclination to want to do that? It's something I'm going to think about over the next week. You do.
No, I know, I, yes, but my, Josh asked if it, are we?
No, I, no, I'm asking if anyone has the stomach potential, like, if, I'm going to think about it over the next week whether or not to make the motion and ask for a vote on adding in four Spanish teachers. I'm just curious if anyone else felt that they would potentially support that or think about it over the next week.
Emily?
I'm totally torn because although I desperately want to support that, I also am having a very hard time with the lack of social workers at the middle school level. I, that makes me very uncomfortable for so many reasons that I feel very strongly that that is a significant need also. So those are two things that I think a lot about.
Cindy?
I know that I've said that before, that the social workers are a real concern for me, but was, when you were going through the does not, includes, like, you put little dots near things that were, like, sticking out to me, and it was the STEM teacher, it was the middle school social workers, it was the concern about class sizes, and then it was the grade seven core. So certainly, I, those are things that are very concerning to me.
Josh, so to answer your question, I, I am a huge proponent of, of that, and that's been something we've been trying to do. You know, I've been on the board 10 years. But as we were just going through all of those things, something that stuck out to me as well is class size. Because even before, everything we tried to do with world language, our priority was always class size. And then over these last probably four years, we've watched all that work that we do just go, go boom, boom, puff. So that would be something that I would, you know, be concerned about as well.
We obviously have a lot of concerns, and we can't address them all at this time in this economic climate. So I would, I wouldn't vote yes to that. We just added in the STEM teacher. I don't think we should, you know, go even further because we just, we can't in this economic climate. There's just too many things, and it's very difficult, the situation that we're in. I think we should just stay where we're, where we at. I mean, of course, we have to readdress everything after CIP, but I don't think we, we should.
Other comments?
I think holding off until after that we get the CIP report is a good idea for the simple reason that we don't know what we're getting, what we're losing. So hopefully, we don't lose anything, but we can look at it at a future date.
Okay. Right, yes, we have, yeah, we have to get this done by March 2nd. Okay, I'm going to go to item D on our agenda, which is public participation in any matter related to board responsibilities. Seeing nobody in the public, is there anybody who'd like to call in on the phone? Again, the phone number, 860-665-8736. Okay, seeing nobody calling in right now, we'll go again. We just did this, but we'll go around in case anybody has final comments. And we'll, Agenda Item E, which is remarks by board members, and we can start with Dr. Braverman.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to report yesterday I had Mark Schwartz, the CIO from Bloom Shapiro, come and present to our students. Do you know Mark?
I do.
He's a great guy. I does a great job in using Excel in the workplace. And so we asked him questions because he's at Bloom Shapiro. Bloom, he told us Bloom Shapiro has won the contract from the state to create the chartered budget look-alike, chartered accounts for all 169 towns. So next year, we should, or he's hopeful, next year or the year after, our budget should look different. May easier, you don't think so? Well, he thought it might look significantly because they're writing it. Right, I know. Well, it would be, so there may be.
Interesting to see if there's any changes.
For us to see something that looks differently.
Thank you. Sure. Bob?
I think after seeing the changes in the new sheets that we added into our booklet here, I think we'll study it a little bit, come back in the next date, and that's be the proper time to make our adjustments. Thank you.
Emily?
Thanks, everyone, for answering our questions from, I'm like, was it yesterday? No, last week. I appreciate all the work that you've put in to getting those answers for us. And to all of my fellow board members for all of the work that you guys put into. And also, I just wanted to say thanks to the Martin Kellogg Drama Club for the invitation to the play this year. I'm really excited.
Cindy? What's that? Josh?
Yes, I had two things, now I have three. I did not get an invitation for Martin Kellogg, so I'm, I'm feeling personally affronted. So if, if, if you could write a note to maybe contact them.
Was there a note in front of your mailbox?
No, I, I, I actually, I cleared in front of it. I was a responsible adult.
If you remind me, I'll leave a chat.
I, I don't know. Lou, I'm really looking forward to the redo of that flow chart. Right now.
I can't wait to get into it tomorrow.
I think right now you're getting an I for a grade on that assignment, so hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can bump that up to a completed assignment.
He's, he's got to pee, progressing towards the standard.
Is that, yeah.
You're at a pee. Hopefully, next week, you'll give an M.
And last is going through line by line with everyone. You know, one of the things I've always looked for over six years now is what could we potentially cut out? What, in, in, in some years, we've seen it. You know, I do want to say I didn't star anything that I was like, oh, that's something we can definitely just cut out. It seems like this is an incredibly lean budget. We cut over a half million dollars out of all of our program areas. I don't see anything easy to cut out. You know, sometimes we hear from the community that we're a rubber stamp for the superintendent. I, I like to respond that oftentimes, we agree because he's doing what's in the best interest of our district, along with your staff. I think that that's clear in the budget. Where as lean as we can get, everything's accounted for. Everything that's not, I've asked about 40 questions into, and I'm putting Lou on cross-examination constantly. So, you know, I, I feel comfortable, you know, if, obviously, if anything pops up over the next week or two that, that the administration feels is something that was an oversight or something that they feel can be cut out, I, you know, I'll bring that to our attention at our next meeting. But I personally didn't see anything and was looking pretty closely. Thanks.
Okay.
Last night, I attended town council. I stayed for the entire meeting. The Anna Reynolds Building Committee was discussed under new business. It wasn't voted upon because they have to wait two weeks. But I do not get the sense that it's going to go forward. I did speak in public participation, saying I would ask them to please consider it because I don't see any harm in at least forming the committee to start. But I don't feel, I don't know, I don't.
Can I ask a question at, at the meeting, and I did not see it? Did anybody remind or discuss the fact about putting in an application and grant funding now? And how chances are, the 50% reimbursement would not be available in the future?
That was discussed, that, there was a risk of losing that, yes.
That was discussed, okay.
Yes, so.
But you still felt after that discussion that?
Yes, I did feel that. So there, it's coming back up in two weeks. And thanks to everybody for all the thoughtful discussions on our budget and the answers and the hard work. I appreciate it.
Yep, I'd say everybody said what I would say. God, it stinks going last all the time. But anyway, yes, thank you for all the hard work. I, I do really appreciate it. And, and like Josh said, I mean, we have been accused many, many times of rubber stamping. And, and I, again, I want to remind everybody, we're coming in at a 2.49% with contractual obligations, cuts to every major program area. We are in a second year where we've eliminated programs like the gifted program, where we're not able to move forward important things like social workers, you know, like our world language program. So, you know, I, I think that everybody around this table, every single one, has, has done their part. And I appreciate all of the hard work and all the conversation. And with that, how about a motion to adjourn? Can I have a second?
Yes.
And we are adjourned at 8:46. Thank you.